Roll call.
Mayor King Delora.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Esposito.
Here.
Councilor Fuentes.
Here.
Councilor Whitworth.
Here.
Can I have a motion to approve the April 3, 2012 special town council meeting public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Esposito, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor King Delora.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Dudy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Whitworth.
Yes.
Can I have a motion to approve the April 4, 2012 special WPCA town council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Esposito, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor King Delora.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Dudy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fuentes.
Yes.
Can I have a motion to approve the April 4, 2012 special town council meeting? Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Esposito, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor King Delora.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Dudy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Whitworth.
Yes.
Special Water Pollution Control Authority. Item three, approval of engineering services, relocation of Branford Road meter pit.
Briefly, we put out a request for bids or proposals for engineering services for the area relocation as part of the DOT 139 down road, the alignment project. We see three bids, the low bidder is Nathan B. Young of Norson, $9,240. You can technically be sure we will warrant Nathan B. Young to do the design and purchase. This is 100 percent reimbursable to say it's part of the DOT project. This along with the construction work later, which we'll have to go through with the DOT in the brief as well, but this is the first part of our base relocation. As a matter of fact, here are the four required actions. I think it's a personal service and according to you, the result of the town and renovation. I think the county and the purchasing agents will move forward with the on the way.
Thank you.
Before you just leave.
Regular town council agenda. Reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Permanent Project Building Committee.
Permanent Project Building Committee met last week in regards to the STW conversion. I will report on that section of it. The architect revised his fees and they basically doubled, which is what we were expecting due to the scope of the project. The town council approved at their last meeting to go ahead and appropriate the funds for what it will take us to get into the door. Estimated timeline, they are putting bid specs together now that they will present to the building committee at our next meeting in May. And then once they get the paperwork ready and everything and it goes out to bid, bids will probably open in June and they expect to start work probably sometime late July, early August. And they anticipate at this point in time being done by the end of the year in December of this year. So that's basically what their timeline is and we are moving forward with it.
Thank you. Be hazardous, waste recycling committee?
It's America, give a brief report. The committee met last week. They conducted, they started the leak drop off center again. They've done electronics recycling. We're in, we are in the middle of scrap week and, you know, we're picking up bulk during the year, so there's a little bit of confusion, but things are moving forward and the committee had some input on the request for proposals for the solid waste disposal and collection contract, which was provided with a council for your information. We're finalizing that document so that it can be put out on the street very quickly. We're incorporating the comments from the town attorney's office, which will be completed by the end of this week and we should be out to bid very shortly.
Item C, Finance Subcommittee.
Rose is going to report on that again.
Finance Subcommittee met last week. The bulk of our talk was in regards to budget, which we'll get into further into the agenda items here. Richard just mentioned about the RFP for our trash contract, which will be going out once it's approved. And the other thing that we talked about as far as things that need to be covered in the current fiscal year are the payouts for sick and vacation time for people that have retired in this fiscal year and the money that will be needed to cover that, which is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $180,000 to $200,000 that we will need to look at once we get our budget figures and see how we're going to end this year. We need to cover that first before we can do anything else with surplus or deciding if it goes into the general fund. There's one contingency transfer that is later on in our agenda and it's for the Charter Revision Commission. And you'll notice that it's less than what they actually use, but this is for the amount for just this fiscal year because Charter Revision will be going beyond June 30th. There will be another appropriation in the next fiscal year to make up the difference that they need. So that's what that appropriation is for. And everything else will be covered further on in the budget in the meeting.
Item D, Emergency Communications Subcommittee.
Committee met on April 12th. The committee basically voted to recommend the move to Town Administration Building for communications and CMA. The microwave system was put on hold until we figure out what the location is going to be. And the equipment was ordered for the fire department assignment test system. That's it.
All right, thank you. Item E, Potato and Corn Festival Committee.
The committee met last night. I have not seen a report. I was unable to make that particular meeting and no issues were brought to my attention. We did meet as a staff, major department heads and myself met with the leaders of the committee to go over all of the logistics for this year's event. And I think everything is on track as of what I'm thinking this year.
Item five, Town Manager's Report.
I will be brief, just to take off from where we left on the permanent project building committee. The building committee has instructed me to inform the construction manager to get after the mechanical contractor. Some defects have been noted in the HVAC system and the repairs would be ordered through the construction manager at the mechanical contractor's expense. There is also an issue with the front, the main doors. There was a proposal submitted by the architect to install bollards. There are some problems, not just with the fire marshal, but with the building committee's interpretation of what that will mean in the long term on the wear and tear of the doors. They've asked for a revised estimate to come through on what a continuous change would be. And we are working with the construction attorney, Denofrio, on pending claim against the architect that based on council's reaction at the last meeting, we have expressed that to the permanent project building committee and looking to move forward towards a resolution so we can start to put this project towards closure. So those are the three big items that are as yet to be addressed. There's also a few more leaks that need to be corrected in the administrative side of the building. Most of the things on the backside of the building are being corrected. For the Swatch property and wall field relocation, the architect is working on the final plans and the specs for construction and the budget for that. In the interim, the site plan received approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission and that was subsequent to approval by the Island Weapons Commission. The, there is no new information on the Connecticut DOT project, either on 139 and School Ground Road or on the DOT 180 and 139 alignment, 80 and 139 alignment. The 8-24 referral for 27th Branford Road is back from the Planning and Zoning Commission and I believe the town attorney will have a comment on the next step in that process. We are putting together the final bid specs for the tents and basketball court resurfacing and the modest demolition. We are looking at updated estimates and alternatives using our equipment and labor bid and some local hauling contractors to get rid of the debris. The opportunity to have a controlled burn is no longer on the table. So we will continue to keep you updated on that. There's a meeting on the week of the 23rd on the statewide employee healthcare system and our opportunity to join that. We will be gathering information from the state and then conveying that to the unions as we interpret it, get all the answers and move it forward. That's the end.
Thank you.
One last good question. Mary D. Oleskowicz called me about paperwork for the riot program.
That's been resolved.
It's been resolved?
It was pending a budget modification and Anthony took care of that and it was sent over last week.
Monday. Citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence.
I thought it would be fitting to provide the town council and those present with an update as far as the status of the fire that's taking place on the property of the Barelli Farm. So if I could have a few minutes of your time, I'll provide you with an update. As most of you know, the fire started on the 10th of April when the fire department from North Branford and North Haven was dispatched to the rear of 1003 Middletown Avenue at about 2:30 last Tuesday afternoon. After the exact location was identified and the resources deployed on site, based upon what the needs were, a total of nine units from North Haven and North Branford put a fire suppression activity into place. We established unified command between North Branford and North Haven Departments. We notified the Department of Environmental Protection and Energy, DEEP, because of the amount of smoke that was being generated as a result of the organic material that in height was about 70 feet and occupied an area of about 250 feet around. It was determined that it was burning from top to bottom. So it was a deep-seated fire of organic material. And after DEP hazmat crews arrived, it was determined that the smoke was not hazardous at the time and there was no hazardous substances involved. As a result of the smoke to the areas and the wind direction, we, the town enacted the Everbridge reverse 911 system and sent out immediate notification to the town's residents as to the status of the fire and the actions that the town was taking. On Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, the wind direction was forcing the smoke towards the Route 80 side of the town. And from a historical perspective, it stayed at that point until the weekend when the wind reversed, moved the smoke towards the Route 17 side. And then as of about 6 o'clock this morning, smoke reversed and now it's in a southeast direction coming back towards the Route 80 side. We met with the property owner and told him what our intention was and that was to basically extinguish the fire by disconstructing the pile. It would be required that excavation equipment would be needed on site. Being that it was on private property and in the town of North Branford, we would support any efforts. It's in a non-hydrant area. Because it was an active fire at that time, we indeed started fire suppression activity with drafting from a pond that is on site that we understand is fed by natural spring. From Tuesday to Wednesday and early Thursday morning, my calculations is we flowed approximately 1 million gallons of water on that fire. 1 million gallons. We made very little impact on the extinguishment. The only way to put out a fire of this nature is to take the pile apart, separate it out, reduce the mass, reduce the heat. We stopped operations, both departments, at about 8 o'clock that evening. The next day, we're on scene with both departments once again. We started fire suppression activities. The smoke was still in the same direction. Made contact with East Shore Health District, provided them with an update of the information. We made contact with the Board of Education, provided them with an update because of the schools being in the direction of the smoke. We continued our operation until about 3:30 that afternoon. We continued to monitor the activity. As a result of the water runoff that was a concern by DEP and runoff moving into various tributaries in North Haven, we stopped water flow. And I mean, the fire department and also the property owner who had established a sprinkler irrigation system on site with his own equipment stopped the water application. And again, the runoff was a concern. Thursday and Friday, we were also, you know, in a monitoring mode. We worked with the property owner to get excavation equipment on site. He did use his equipment. It deconstructed some of the pile. However, when you look at the size and mass of what was burning, it made very little Interesting to note that in the wee hours of Friday morning, we responded with North Haven Fire Department across from 95 Warner Road and supported their fire suppression operation on a fully involved structure fire in a vacant building that there was no electrical service. That property owned, is owned by the Barelli family. State police were called to the scene and because of the amount of water that was deployed, it would be a hazard to use the accelerant sniffing dog around the property and the fire is undetermined at the present time. Over the weekend, on the 14th and 15th, again, as I said before, the wind direction changed to the Route 17 side. And I have to tell you, at a minimum, I fielded 20 calls over the weekend from very concerned, irate, I will call it, citizens and provided them with the exact details that I'm providing this town council with tonight. Again, the fact was, in order to extinguish the fire, in order to stop the smoke from affecting our homes, the pile needs to be taken apart. That's the bottom line. We could put all the water we want on it. It's not going to have any impact. It's a deep, very deep-seated fire. On yesterday, again, early in the morning, we responded to a number of smoke investigation calls throughout the town. I received a call from the Honeywell Corporation and they had a number of employees that were complaining of some medical issues related to the intake of smoke into the HVAC system that were dealt with. We contacted DEP again and I have to emphasize that we have made numerous, numerous calls into the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and they have four different divisions that have been in communication about this incident, whether it be air quality, hazardous material, solid waste management, or their water waste sections. And it seems that we have gotten very little positive feedback up until today. We worked with a gentleman in the air quality unit, again, looking for some help to the scene and very, very little cooperation. I can tell you this, that this morning, we made some, what I'll call, political assertiveness at the state level. And I had a representative, a deputy director from the DEP with four inspectors on site at 2 o'clock this afternoon. And I think without that assertiveness, that wouldn't have happened. And I really need to thank those people who worked behind the scenes to make that happen. Unfortunately, last night, I had a little incident with a citizen who was trespassing and up onto the pile that resulted in that individual being arrested. We worked with local officials and state officials today. As I said, we met at 2 o'clock this afternoon. The bottom line is that either the property owner or the state would take over control of the site and dictate how the extinguishment was going to take place. In either case, the finances were to be borne by the property owner. And the property owner was told it could be in excess of $100,000 for equipment and operators on that scene through the DEP. We made one last ditch effort to allow the property owner to secure a contractor. He has done that. An evaluation was done just about 6 o'clock tonight by a contractor who we're told will assemble crews on scene tomorrow morning. I'll be on scene tomorrow morning with representatives of DEEP and monitoring his activity. Again, that work is to disconstruct the pile, separate the material so that the mass is reduced, the heat is reduced, and whatever extinguishment is necessary at that point, we'll deploy the necessary resources to take care of that. The bottom line is the smoke will continue to affect the town until that is done. I'll reiterate, we can put all the water we want on it. We can drain that pond dry. It will not cease the fire. It's a very deep-seated fire. It, you know, I can't tell you how long it's been burning. We've exhausted all means. It appears to be very accidental in origin. He is, you know, not burning without a permit because he didn't cause the fire. There's some other legal issues that will probably arise as a result of this. I've been keeping daily documentation. I have daily pictures of the activity and the size of the pile, what has been done, what has not been done, because at some point, there'll be legal action somewhere in the mitigation of this incident. So to protect that town, protect our town, that needs to be done on a regular basis. I really have to, you know, thank our volunteers and the cooperation that we've had from not only town, the state officials, but the large number of hours and equipment that we've deployed to the scene in the last week. Our personnel, you know, worked exceptionally well with North Branford and, you know, they were quite exhausted at the end of all the days. So, so again, that's where we stand right now and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here just to speak on behalf of the office.
Just state your name and address. State your name and address for the...
Anthony Deluise, 260 Forest Road in North Branford.
Craig Manawite, attorney for the union, 700 West Johnson Avenue, Teshere, Connecticut.
Good evening, thank you. As the union president, I'm here just to speak about a concern that we've addressed before. As police officers, we don't get involved in town affairs or politics, but when it becomes a public safety issue, we find that it's incumbent to speak to you just so you can hear from the officers in the street on why we're here and what the concern is. More and more often, there are two police officers on the road. And I know without a doubt in my mind, no one in this council is more concerned about the safety of the citizens, just like the police officers are. We're on the same page. And I know the challenge, have to be physically responsible. But more and more often, with two police officers, we aren't able to provide a level of public safety and protection to the citizens and the businesses that deserve. It's happening more and more frequently. And we're here because we are sincerely frightened that something's going to happen. And we could be proactive by having the additional two officers that the union spoke with the commission, spoke with the chief. It was submitted. It was never addressed at the council level and in fact, at the council level, further cuts were made, which would compound already concerning problem. None of this is going to put a dime in one police officer's pocket. I don't think anybody would disagree that having just two officers on as often as we do is adequate. We're looking to get to three and without at least two bodies. And don't forget, we're short two. We're going to be short another one. There's discussion at the council level to hold off hiring, to make up for some of the additional cuts that were made, which means when we come into our summer months and our crime activity is at its highest, we're going to be the most understaffed that we've been in a while. We also, we've recently had a sergeant's test, so that will be improved, but we've had 60% as a high number on certain shifts where there was no supervision. Two police officers with no supervisor, that's just not modern day police practicing. Don't listen to us. Bring in any outside unbiased agency. There's FBI data out there, there's National Institute of Justice, there's organizations that you can have evaluate. We are so understaffed, just at 30,000 feet, look at the neighboring departments who have a percentile officers per capita so much greater than ours. We just don't want to see a cop hurt. We don't want to see a citizen hurt. We don't want to not be able to respond to that 911 call. With two officers, when we're making an arrest when it happens, there is nobody patrolling the streets for hours at a time. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to realize how the businesses are vulnerable and you don't even have to run. There's no cop that can get there quick because there just isn't anybody. So I don't know how we can have a better communication with you. We're not in the chain of command of the budget, obviously, but we have this sincere concern for the safety of the citizens, protecting the businesses' life and property and the guys in the street. That's why we're here. We're not here, whatever issues there are with the commission, the administration department, it's just the officers in the street and we implore the council to please understand where we're coming from. We can't provide what needs to be done out there with the numbers of bodies we have. Two would give us a start. It won't fix every problem there is, but it will give us a start to adequately address that.
Not only that, I'd just also like to add, it's not only the union that's coming forward and making this request, it's also your own police chief. We are in support of the chief. He has for several years asked for additional manpower. He recognizes the issues that President Deluise has just spoke about. Not only has the chief made requests for this additional manpower, your own police commission, your own commission that's been appointed and elected by the citizens and yourselves of the town of North Branford have made this request. It's not too late. There still is the ability to add to the police budget tonight. You can make that choice. Two men in today's day and age is not sufficient. It's penny wise and it's pound foolish and it's not responsible budgeting. We understand more than anyone the constraints of the modern day economy. This is not safe for our membership. We, again, ask you to reconsider the staffing level and reconsider the chief's proposal. It can be done tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Officer Cunningham, the North Branford Police Department, excuse my own notice, 260 Forest Road. I know you've seen President Deluise, Officer Deluise, talk many, many times, along with the lawyers and the chief. I thought maybe putting myself up here, being on the department for only two years, going through the academy, being fresh out of the academy, I could maybe shine a little light on what maybe you guys don't understand outside of what your jobs are. And I know your jobs are very difficult. You have an entire town to take care of fiscally and all that. But myself, along with my brothers, we're in charge to make sure that this town does stay safe, along with making sure that we go home every night to our families. And that's top priority. There are men and women in these blues every day that do not make it home to their families and it breaks my heart. We read about it in magazines every single day. The latest was New Hampshire, chief, eight days out of retirement, shot and killed. In a town less than, what, 5,000 people? Happens everywhere, not just New Haven, not just Chicago, not just the big cities. When I come to work and put on my vest and I say goodbye to my wife, I don't say I see you later, I say goodbye. And the off chance, knock on wood, that I don't make it home, she knows I said goodbye. That's what I go through every night. And when it's just me and one other officer, usually Officer Hannon, who combined, we have five years of experience with no supervisor on midnights, it's a scary thing. When I have to go to a house by myself and my backups on the other side of town, but I have to do what I have to do. So I implore you, please, look beyond all the other stuff that's going on, just get behind us, help us out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm your chief. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but after listening to my brother officers, I started this job in 1970. It was two men on the road. Forty-two years later, there's still two men on the road. We're taking between 12,000 and 13,000 complaints a year. The reason why there's only two men on the road is because my overtime's been cut so much by the town council. I try to stay within the budget, I don't fill shifts. We have one officer, one sergeant right now on funeral leave. be in deficit over $100,000. So I have to make a sacrifice, and my sacrifice is to run two men on the road. So I try to stay within my budget. Do I feel comfortable? No, I don't feel comfortable at all. We did make two sergeants last Tuesday night, which is going to help the supervision. But if the council could find any dollars, even to get one man, that certainly would help. There's six months in the police academy. There's another 400 hours of FTO, which is Field Training Officer, that's required by the state. It takes almost a full year to put an officer on the road. We have a pending retirement, it's coming in June or July, and we have another pending retirement that's going to come in December. Basically, we're going to be devastated. We're going to almost have to lock the doors if we don't get some manpower, because you're not going to get the service. Now, listen to the fire chief, you know, he's working hard with his volunteers, and we're working hard also. We're trying to give the town the best bang for their buck. If you could find it, I don't know how you could find it, but if you could find it to help us, certainly myself and definitely the men would appreciate it. We want to be proactive. When there was a $10,000 cut to my fuel account, a sergeant came up to me and he said, "Do you want to park the cars?" I said, "Absolutely not. We're going to perform our duties, we're going to patrol the town of North Branford like we always have." The rules and regulations state we must patrol our posts in a timely fashion. We're not going to park for two hours and shut the cars off. We're not going to do that. So we're going to try to do the best we can, what we have. I'm the carpenter, I need that hammer, and I need that sharp saw. And again, we're making a plea, we're not trying to line anybody's pockets with any dollars, we're just trying to give the town the best service. It's two men working, two men working tonight. Everybody you see back here, they're off duty. We make sure they're off duty, so there's no criticism. But whatever you could do, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Any more comments? Any more statements?
I've been in town for, I don't know, 47 some odd years. When I first came into town, we had a resident state trooper. One state trooper. Durham, to the present day, has a resident state trooper, and they covered the whole town of Durham. I'm not saying that the officers we have in our town don't do a tremendous job. They do a tremendous job, but if you want to get, continue the way we're going, there's got to be some give backs. Unions don't want to give back, and we have a union, I don't know what he is, a lawyer or whatever he is, they don't want to give back anything, they just want to keep everything status quo, but add more people. Maybe if they give back a little, we could hire another officer. But it's got to give a little to get a little. That's the way I do it when on my budget, that's the way everybody else should be doing it in their budget, and the police are going to have to do the same thing. I don't know what else to tell them. Like I say, they do a tremendous job, and I hope they continue doing it, but they're going to have to make some cuts somewhere. Maybe it's salaries, they got to make some cuts. Maybe it's less overtime, they're going to make some cuts. Some cuts are going to have to be made to maintain the service, not just add more to it. That's just my take on that.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Resignations and appointments. There is none. Unfinished business discussion in action regarding A, land conveyance, 27 Branford Road, A-24 referral.
Mr. Mayor, as you can tell from the document that's been enclosed, Cunningham Zoney has recommended the actual, the land swap, if you will. The obvious action that has to be taken by the town council would be to approve the swap of the properties once we prepare the appropriate deeds for that action. There's also a question that I can raise since we are dealing with public land, as to whether or not there should be a public hearing prior to the town actually approving the swapping of properties. That's something that I want to check before I, before I tell the town council that we need a public hearing or we can go right into preparing the deeds. I should have that information up there, so on the next agenda, we can either have deeds or we can still have a public hearing, whatever's required by the state.
All right, thank you, John. Item B, charter revision.
The council hereby refers to the following items, which were attached to our memo, to the North Branford Charter Revision Commission for their review and potential action, and sets the compensation for the clerk to the commission at $75 per meeting in accordance with the established fee schedule. And the items that are on our attached list were the three items that were submitted by Lisa Valenti, the town clerk, in regards to Section C-4-6, publication of public hearings, C-8-5, wording change in the budget referendum, and C-3-5, the registrar of voters, and that is due to the change in the state statute as far as how many elected registrar of voters. And items discussed by the council were Section C-8-5, and it's the section regarding the percentage of voters required for the council to take action on the budget based on the referendum vote. Item C-3-4, the Board of Education consider making it an odd number of members. Item C-2-5, minority representation, that would change if they changed the number of represents on the Board of Ed. C-3-2, the terms of office, Article III for elected offices, and this is to consider the term of office for the BOE to start at their regularly scheduled meeting in November following the election. Item C-6-1, appointment and approval. This is Article VI, the town manager, and this is to consider the provision in Sections A regarding the issue of residency of the town manager. And the other items on here were from Lisa Valenti.
Motion made by Councilor Angeloni, moved by Councilor Duty. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duty.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Wettler.
Yes.
Item C, North Branford High School roof.
Mayor, this item continues to be on the agenda of the council's request. There's no new information to report than what was reported at the last special meeting of the council. We're waiting on funding and appropriation for the basic infrastructure, and we're working to get the resolution of the state issues on the agenda.
Thank you. Item 10, new business discussion in action. Item A, ratification, town council recommended budget resolution.
Does this item have to be tabled until we finish the budget?
You should do the thicker packet first. The thicker packet had the changes. I guess that also was the same information, but with the revenue numbers on that third and final page.
So why don't we move A to H, being that that's towards the end of the meeting, so we have further discussion?
Well--
Will they go together? They're part and parcel of you. Once you make your changes, if you want to make the changes that are on the blue shaded sheets, that then results in the number falling in line with what's on your 10-A.
What I'm trying to say is move, even though they're together, move item A to make that H, or just wait until the end?
Well, there's nothing on the agenda, first of all, to discuss, to continue the budget. Where does that fall under?
There's no discussion.
Item A.
Ratification. Ratification.
You can't write a budget document unless you make the changes to the budget.
So we have to continue our budget workshop first? So--
Yes.
Yes.
So we have to amend the agenda?
Right.
You can amend the agenda to add a workshop, or you can consider it all under the, under this item for discussion in action.
I want you to amend the agenda to discuss, we're talking about discussion of the budget. Ten seconds.
So that'll be 10-H?
Are we saying that? 10-H. Yeah.
All right.
If we could do it all under A, why don't we just do it under A, instead of going through another motion and making another step that we have to do? If we can just do it, go right into the budget cuts in A, let's do it in A instead of going through all this--
Can we do that?
Well, we still--
Pretty cut and dry.
Why don't we--
If you guys want to do a workshop, that's fine and dandy, Bob, whatever.
I've got a motion on the floor. What do you want to do?
Both items, there's a motion on the floor.
Well, right, and under 10-A, the motion that is prepared for us doesn't cover--
Doesn't cover--
--finishing the budget.
Right.
So I think we need to add to the agenda to finish the budget, because the way the motion states is, it's like the budget's already done.
Then that should, A should be H, and H should be A.
Well, once we amend the agenda, then we can just move it up in the process.
All right, moved by Councilor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duty.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Wettler.
Yes.
Why don't you sneak each other? Why don't you sneak each other?
Yeah, it's hard, why didn't yellow?
Blue sheets?
Yeah, it's yellow and a blue behind it. Keep going.
It's kind of in the middle of the pack is what's proposed.
Oh, shaded on the white, okay.
Right.
Shaded on the--
Yeah.
On the copy.
All right, where we start? So you want to move H up in front of A? Do we need to, do we need to do that? Do we need to move H and do that right now in front of A, or do you want--
We'll just throw that item on the agenda.
I think that could be incorporated into that motion. You added it to the agenda, and we're going to adjust that first before you get the items, so I don't have to be the second motion.
Okay.
Mayor, this is, what is presented to you is a summary sheet of the budget reductions and the revenue amendments that were made subsequent to the last budget workshop. At the instructions of the town council, my office, the director, finance director, and select departments, mostly all departments that are present in the process, to go through the remaining sections of the budget and to look at areas in keeping with the reductions that have previously been made by the council, to go through and look at further 1% to 2% reductions in various budget lines. Those are presented in a format that you can follow page by page, and those items are highlighted in blue. The total reductions and the recommended changes, the use of fund balance and certain revenue lines result in a proposed zero mill increase for the taxpayers next year, and the venture totals, the revenue totals presented here.
Let's do it.
I mean, I'm going to cut it off. I'm going to make the cut.
I think what we need to do is to go through them because the public doesn't know what we cut and where we cut it, and I think you need to go through them, and that's what my, I thought we were going to do all along.
And have the discussion.
Well, you just have to hear the department number, the account number.
This came to the finance, it didn't come to the whole council, it came in the mail.
No, I understand. It was provided in a couple of different formats. It was provided on a summary sheet--
Right, but it was in our packet also.
It was in our--
It was in the packet.
This was in the packet, yeah.
That is meant to be incorporated into the motion, so the inch motion--
I understand that. I would like the public to know what we're doing.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you ready? Forty-two thirty?
It's a reduction in 92, 204.
Forty-two thirty by 9,204.
Under account, you have to read the account number.
It's under other contractual, 320, under fire hydrants, or hydrants.
Second.
How much is it?
9,204, 9,204.
Thank you.
Moved by Councilor Duty, seconded by Councilor Angeloni.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duty.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Wettler.
Yes.
Okay, next is item 4240, communications. Be line item 103, overtime, by $2,384.
Second.
Want to do them all together, or you want to do them individually? You got four of them. All right, 120 pension and social security by $373. Line item 201, office supplies by $400. Line item 202, technical supplies by $1,200.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Duty, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duty.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Wettler.
Next is item 4250, emergency management.
It'd be 202, technical supplies by $1,000.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Duty, seconded by Councilor Fuji. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duty.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Wettler.
Yes.
Next item is 4302, refuge. Item number 320, other contractual, by $15,000.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Duty, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duty.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Wettler.
Yes.
Next item is 4305, public works. Be line item 205, agriculture supplies by $2,000. 208, construction materials by $3,400. 209, motor fuel and lubricants by $6,800. Motor fuel and lubricants by $1,785. Line item 320, other contractual by $2,000. Line item 320, other contractual by $5,000. Line item three twenty, other contractual, by five thousand dollars. And line item four oh four, construction equipment, by thirty-eight hundred.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Angeloni.
Before we take roll call, I just, um, Franny, can you just explain what the other contractual that we're cutting for? Or Richard, do you remember what?
I think what we cut is tree maintenance, tree cutting service, and we cut guy rail installation or something along those lines.
Okay.
All set?
Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Okay, next is item forty-seven thirty-four, benefits. Be item seven twenty-one, medical insurance, by five thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars.
That's correlated to that change above, so if you're not going to do that change above, that goes away.
Okay.
But is that a combination, is that just for public works, or was it also the?
Just public work, just see it again, two spots down.
Oh, from, okay, perfect.
Okay, I withdraw that motion then. I'll move on to forty-four hundred, recreation. One oh one, full time, by six thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight dollars, sorry. One twenty pension and social security, by one thousand fifty-five dollars. Three eleven, facilities maintenance, by fifteen hundred dollars. Three twenty, other contractual, by fourteen ninety-three.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Angeloni, discussion?
Yeah, Richard, the reduction in the full time is due to. That's three months delay in hiring.
Just for the record, just so, you know, everybody knows, we still do have a hiring freeze, is that right? A hiring freeze in place, or even when that time comes, it has to come back before the council's got our approval to hire the secretary. All right, I just want to make sure, because, you know.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Okay, next item is forty-seven thirty-four, medical benefits, item number seven twenty-one, by five thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Fucci. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Next item is senior services, account number forty-four oh five, be to the one oh one full time account, by two thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The one twenty pension and social security, by three thousand, uh, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. Three oh two utilities, by seven hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Fucci, roll call. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Next item is four four one six, library, four oh five, technical equipment, by nine thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Fucci, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Okay, next item is forty-five oh one, be the health department. Be three, three twenty other contractual, by two thousand dollars. Three twenty other contractual, by two thousand dollars. Before I second, I have a question on that. We reduced this budget by four thousand dollars, that's the East Shore?
No.
What is that?
These specifically are two contributions that are made that the secretary and the past, one is to the renewal team, and the other is domestic violence of Brayden and Haven. Our, our staff has reported that those are very little used services by the residents, and we have alternatives to be provided locally that will substitute, so it does not affect the shore health district.
Well, it doesn't affect their budget, but my, my next question is, since they raised their fees on all the restaurants and vendors in town, shouldn't we be cutting back what we give to them?
They tripled their.
They only doubled them, Don.
Fees according to.
Oh, they only doubled them?
They only doubled them, yeah.
For a vendor, a vendor, then, a vendor that was stages in Northford Center, his rate went from seventy dollars a year to two hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Mine's, mine's over four hundred.
If we're funding them, and they're raising their fees, you know.
So if they triple, if they tripled all their fees, maybe they should get cut a little more to.
Bob May.
If I can address on that question, we raised a few weeks back, in anticipation of the budget, and there was some comment about fees and fee increases, and I think there have been fee increases at East Shore, but I also think there have been fee increases from the state of Connecticut.
Absolutely.
That are passed on to restaurants that, some folks are looking at as saying, these are all one and the same, some fees are pass-throughs, like we have, and, and others are directly from East Shore, or they're just, or the restaurant, or particular business owner might be looking them as, as all the one fee structure.
Well, my, my next question to that then, Richard, is if, if that's the case, let's just hypothetically speaking, if we had our own health department in this town, and our own health director, would we still be subject by the state to these fees? I mean, is that like a set rate, that the state tells them that they have to charge, and, and if we had that same job of doing it, would we, I guess that's my question to you.
If it's a state prescribed rate, then I believe it applies to every business that falls into that category in the state.
Do we know that that's what that is, for sure?
But these rates are East Shore health rates, I believe.
Or, yeah, that's what I'm asking.
But there, my explanation was, there are, there is some discrepancy of rate increases, some of which are attributable to the state. The East Shore Health District rules are, are their own.
Can we get him to the next council meeting?
Sure.
Do they notify the town, or anyone, when they're doing this, or they just arbitrarily?
I believe that the, the board approves their rates, East Shore Health District Board.
Well, they actually had a meeting, representatives from three towns, because I'm on that board, and I wasn't in favor of all these, these rates, but they had representatives from all towns to meet and tell, they told them what they were going to raise the rates to, and they didn't seem to mind, so.
I mean, representatives from the restaurant.
Restaurants, yeah, from the restaurants, that's what they told me, I, I didn't go to the meeting, so I don't know. We weren't invited.
They don't give any notice on those trip orders.
They had a group of, of business owners, and they ran the scenarios by then, and no one's in favor of increasing fees.
Yeah, I wouldn't think anybody would be in favor on that board of increasing fees, but.
So it's what you have in front of you tonight, or just for those, those items that I had made on East Shore?
Well, if, in the event, if we bring them in, and we talk them, in the event that we wanted to cut it more, we still have time to open the budget for that.
No, this is it tonight, right?
Depending on the results of the referendum, yes, you could, you could go back to.
Depending on the results of the referendum. Okay, well, I mean, I'm just asking the question, I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but.
That's the least of my headaches, is my license fee, Johnny. So it's the corporation tax, corporate entity tax, unemployment compensation, that they went up on, I mean, we can go for a long time on this, let's just do our budget and go home.
I'm good with that. I second the motion, yeah.
Roll call. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Before we move on, Richard, so you're going to call, or notify East Shore Health to be on our next agenda?
I have to pass the cell here for the next town council meeting.
All right, good.
I talked to them earlier today, and I don't know the situation.
Thank you.
Next item is forty-five oh seven, hazardous waste, it'd be the two oh two technical supply account, by one thousand dollars.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Wentworth, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Next item is forty-six seven zero, the planning department. It's line item three twenty, other contractual, by five hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Fucci. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Next item is forty-six seventy-three, economic development commission. Line item number three oh three, printing and binding, by seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Seconding.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Fucci, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Next item is forty-six seventy-four, engineering department. It's item, line number three twenty, other contractual, by three thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
What is that?
Ring super.
What is it?
Well, I can explain, that's a backup, my office is responsible for sewer mark out sewer inspections. When we eliminate the engineering assistant position, that used to be his responsibility, I picked it up. That's just to cover, it's, it's a number to cover, if I'm not available, a multiple vacation, or I'm out sick, that's all it is.
So, so Franny can do it.
We do have a agreement that's authorized by the WPCA, the only water reserve sewer contractor, they're our backup, we have the record, so.
We would actually shift that, if there is an expense incurred, we should, we know tax dollars.
And we haven't fetched a lot of it, we, we put it as a placeholder, and we've, we've looked down, um, pretty year, so what would we charge the sewer?
Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Next item is forty-six eighty-one, building department, three twenty other contractual, by fifteen hundred dollars.
Seconding.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Next item is forty-seven thirty-four, benefits. Line item seven forty-one, life insurance, by four thousand dollars.
Seconding.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Fucci. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Next item is forty-seven thirty-four, benefits, line item seven five five, employee leave, by sixty thousand.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Next item is forty-nine hundred, operating transfer, it'd be line item seven forty-one, operating transfer out of capital improvements. The, um, five thousand dollars, and one hundred thousand dollars. What is the hundred thousand dollars?
Is the hundred thousand a plus?
Yeah, would it, would you explain that?
Fund balance, hundred thousand dollars?
Is that what that is?
Well, I don't know.
On the revenue sheet?
No, it's on the bottom of our expenses here, there's a hundred thousand.
Capital improvements, a hundred thousand.
That's the public works, yeah, public works reserves. Public works reserve, we talked about to put in the grand reserves.
Okay, so we are, we transferred that out. Yeah.
Okay, that's the motion.
Yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
So you're not doing it really?
Well, that was part of the motion.
You eliminated it. So you eliminated it, what was the motion you made?
That was for the operating transfer.
No, the reduced, the reduced by five thousand.
It's reduced by five thousand. Now we got to do the hundred, right?
Yeah.
Two separate items.
And the transfer of the, um, capital improvement, a hundred thousand dollars.
We're going to add to capital improvements, correct?
Transfer two, right, we're transferring it two.
Right. Yeah. Second.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Angeloni, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counsel Wentworth?
Yes.
Okay, before we move off of this, I just have a question for Anthony. There were some cuts on here that we didn't make. So, in order to balance this.
In the final summary, seventeen thousand eight eighty.
Right. So, we have to.
Yeah, we're gonna add it.
So, you're gonna add it on, do it on the revenue side?
Yeah, we're going into revenue.
You increase the revenue side by the same amount.
Well, Donnie, you wanna take it from me, shore health? Mike?
Alright, when you do the revenue number then, just change that fifty-three four ninety, add seventeen eight eighty seven.
Or the fifty-three four ninety.
About two-thirds of the way down, your revenue change you gotta make.
Yeah, I got it. Alright, we have to go into the revenue side.
When we, when we do that, are we gonna end up where we wanna be?
Yes.
Yes. Before we go on to the revenue side, I just want to, in regards to the comments that were made tonight in regards to the police department budget, when we look in our, our budget book that we received, there was no increase requested from the department for officers, and there was no increase requested from the board of police commissioners in police officers in the budget book that we received. So, the budget we received from the police department did not ask for those additional officers that were talked about earlier tonight. So, I'm not exactly sure.
I think it was cut at the manager level prior to coming to this.
No. It's right, but right in our book, it says eleven, eleven twelve authorized were a total of twenty-three officers. Department requested for two thousand twelve thirteen is twenty-three. Board of Police Commissioners for twelve thirteen is twenty-three, and manager proposed is twenty-three. So, I'm not exactly sure when all of these requests were made, but at the time the budget had to be submitted to the town manager, there, there was nothing requested from the police department to increase their police force in this issue here. So, stop this beer.
If you remember, at the Saturday morning meeting, we, we updated our requests to include the two officers. And we spoke from nine AM to ten AM on that particular day to include the two officers at that time. It was a change of heart at the commission meeting after they spoke to the union and so forth. So, I presented that on their behalf. Two commissioners were there to upgrade our, our request for the two men. And I think everybody here was, I'm not sure, but I think everybody was.
Right, but, but.
Was it reflected in the money?
No.
That you'd asked for?
No.
No, it wasn't reflected in money, but there was a change of plans for that budget workshop.
Okay, I guess part of my concern is that the, the whole timeline of presenting your budget to the town manager has not changed in the last few years. So, knowing the timeline, and I know that the police commission held some special budget workshops, I don't understand, I guess, why it wasn't originally in your original request that was due at the end of February, I believe, to the town manager, that it came after.
There was three budgets presented to the board of police commissioners, three particular budgets. No manpower increase, one and two.
Okay, so they opted.
They opted in the beginning to go for, no man increase. However, after another meeting that we had at the irregular scheduled board of police commission meeting, I'm not sure when that was, but it was just prior to that Saturday morning meeting. That's when there was a, a change of heart, and they said for me to present it to the council. We did have a one-hour discussion. I believe that my entire budget, the only item that was discussed was for the two additional men. We didn't discuss anything else. So, I apologize if there's any confusion, but that's basically how the, the two men came upon it. Okay? I hope that answers some of your questions.
Well, it, it answers, but the, the point is the comments that were made tonight were that they were requested, but in the budget books that we got, there was.
You're right.
There was no request from the police commissioner nor from the department on there. So, what we were initially presented was no increase in manpower.
You're right.
And, and that's what the police commission voted on, even though they had the options of zero, one, and two. They didn't, they chose not to come forward with the two.
And that's why we had that, that's why there was a change during that, that workshop. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Anthony, on the revenue. Do you need the revenue as proposed by the town manager, or do you just need the changes on the pilot?
Each of those changes below that line.
Okay.
Increase the revenue by those various amounts, except down the bottom where the pilot reduction.
So, changes to pilot based on mill rate change?
That's a reduction.
Minus three thousand, thirty-seven thousand six sixty-nine.
Second.
Is that the right number?
It's on our revenue.
It's on our revenue.
That's already been done. That's the first night. Go down below where it says revenue change by town manager.
Okay. Now, we're to revenue changes proposed by the town manager.
The eighty-five thousand?
Yeah. Increase revenue estimated for prior year tax levies. It'd be account number one oh one, three ten, one five two dash zero zero zero, plus eighty-five thousand.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Angeloni. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Judy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes.
Counsel Pucci?
Yes.
Counsel Wentworth?
Yes.
Okay, next is increase revenue estimated for supplement motor vehicle tax. It'd be one oh one, three ten, one fifty-five dash zero 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 for a plus of thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Fucy. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Judy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes.
Counsel Pucci?
Yes.
Counsel Wentworth?
Yes.
Next is increase revenue estimate for delinquent interest. Be line item number one oh one, thirty fifteen, one seven one, zero 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 for set, plus seventy-five hundred, seventy-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Wentworth. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Judy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes.
Counsel Pucci?
Yes.
Counsel Wentworth?
Yes.
Okay, next is increase revenue from recreation brochure. It'd be one oh one, thirty-four hundred, four four four, oh four six one, zero 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 one, for a plus of two thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Angeloni. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Judy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes.
Counsel Pucci?
Yes.
Counsel Wentworth?
Yes.
Next is increase revenue for ECS grant. It'd be one oh one, thirty-five fifty, four ninety-one, zero zero zero, for an increase of one oh eight, five ten. That's one hundred and eight thousand five hundred and ten.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Duddy. Seconded by Counsel Angeloni. You got a question?
No.
Roll call?
Mayor Candelaora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Judy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes. Yes.
Counsel Wentworth?
Yes.
Next item is increase revenue estimates for refunds prior tax, prior expenditure. It's one oh one, three seven nine nine, five six one dash zero zero zero, for an increase of seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Angeloni. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Judy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes.
Counsel Pucci?
Yes.
Counsel Wentworth?
Yes.
Next item is increase revenue estimate for cancellation of prior year POs. Be one oh one, three seven nine nine, five six nine, zero 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 five, for an increase of ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Angeloni. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Judy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes.
Counsel Pucci?
Yes.
Counsel Wentworth?
Yes.
Next item is increased use of fund balance. It's one oh one, three eight four zero, five nine one, dash zero 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 zero, for a plus of seven thousand one hundred, seven thousand, seventy-one thousand three seventy, seven one three seven zero.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Angeloni. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Judy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes.
Counsel Pucci?
Yes.
Counsel Wentworth?
Yes.
Next is appropriation of fund balance for capital improvements. Be one oh one, three eight four zero, five nine and four, oh four six one, for an increase of one hundred thousand.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Angeloni. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Judy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes.
Counsel Pucci?
Yeah.
Counsel Wentworth?
Yes.
Next is changes in pilot based on mill rate change in the account number one oh one, three thirty thirty, one six one, dash zero 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 zero, for a reduction of nineteen thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Second.
Some discussion on that. I know there's nothing we can do about it, but I, I just have to say that it's ridiculous that we're in a system where they own a third of our town, where everybody from our police, fire, education, public work service is doing without. And because of that, they get a reduction in their taxes. And I just have to say that I know we're working on it, and, and hopefully will prevail, but that's ridiculous.
Well, technically, Al, they don't call it a tax.
I know, it's a, it's a payment in lieu of taxes.
Right.
Based on a mill rate. Somehow, we have to figure out how to get a really high mill rate without.
Without hurting everybody else.
Everybody else.
Alright, I hear ya.
It's ridiculous that every organization in town is doing without, and they get a benefit coming.
Everybody in town's doing without, Al. You know that. Every family, everybody.
I don't have a solution, but I just need it to vent, so.
Moved by Counsel Duddy, seconded by Counsel Angeloni. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Judy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes.
Counsel Pucci?
Yes.
Counsel Wentworth?
Yes.
Next item is changes in the amount to be raised through taxation.
That just flows automatically.
Okay. With rather.
I'd just like to, to make another comment. I mean, we really, the, the cuts weren't, weren't as deep as, as they could have been because we used a lot of money out of fund balance and the increase in the mill rate to not do that. So, it could have really been a lot worse, from what I'm seeing here.
Well, we didn't increase the mill rate at all, stayed the same as last year.
No. Not with this budget.
That's the only cuts and additions that we have to.
So, we have a motion.
Substitute this page in, this is the new numbers, just came off the print.
One, before I make the motion, Anthony, we, we, the mill rate, where are we with the mill rate? Where?
Twenty-seven point seven seven. The new sheet's coming around with the new expenditure levels.
Yeah. I'd like to, I'd like, before we go forward with this, first thing I'd do is tell John Jesman to stop me before I get in trouble. But I'm not in trouble yet. So, pay attention, John. The, what I would like to do is, I, I would like to commend the police officers and the chief for their presentation tonight, their union represent. You guys gave a professional presentation. You were respectful to us. And I, I gotta say, you, you, you know, you probably sold your position. And I'm just speaking for me now, not for the whole council, for me. And I've been saying this for over a year, and I, I know, you know, we're in negotiations with the police union. And for me, I'm hung up on new hires, benefit package coming in line with the economy and the world we live in today. You know, me personally, not looking at anybody who's already here. And, and you know what, guys? I mean, I respect what you did tonight, and, and I, I hope you can at least understand and respect, you know, where I'm at. And I hope to hell that the two parties come together soon enough, so, you know, we, we get over this thing and get you guys a contract, and we up here know what we're looking at. And that's all I have to say about it.
Donnie, you had a motion?
Yeah. I'm, I'm gonna make the motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby adopts the proposed operating budget for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen fiscal year as amended, and recommends the same budget referendum at the attached appropriation levels. And it be hereby further resolved that the treasurer, finance director is authorized to make any mathematical adjustments that may be required to balance the budget.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Fucy, seconded by Counsel Angeloni. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Judy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes.
Counsel Pucci?
Yes.
Counsel Whitmore?
Your item ten B, substitute that new amount in there for the budget number. Ah, okay. Forty-seven, three sixty-eight, one thirty-seven.
I would like to make the motion for the approval of the advisory budget referendum question. Resolve that in accordance with section eight dash five of the charter of the town of North Branford, the town council hereby approves the following advisory referendum question for the fiscal year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget. referendum question for the fiscal year 2012, 2013 budget. Shall the town council recommended budget of forty-seven million, three-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars, which will require a mill rate of twenty-seven point seven-seven mils, be adopted?
I'll second it.
Moved by Counsel Angeloni, seconded by Counsel Fucy. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Duddy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes.
Counsel Pucci?
Yes.
Counsel Wentworth?
Yes.
Emergency dispatch regionalization resolution of support. Item C. I move the motion that the town council hereby authorizes town manager and chief executive officer, as the chief executive officer of town in North Bramford and representatives to the C-MED board of directors to extend to the board of directors of the South Central Emergency Medical Dispatch of New Haven, the intent of the town in North Bramford to serve as a host community for C-MED and the regional emergency communications dispatch center.
Second.
Discussion.
I just had a quick question. This is gonna be, when they do come, or if they do come to town, centralized town hall? What are we doing about training and cross-training with dispatchers? Is that all worked out for police and fire?
We, we're extending the hand to C-MED. We just have to wait for their response back.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Duddy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes.
Counsel Pucci?
Yes.
Counsel Wentworth?
Yes.
Item D, appropriation transfers.
There's basically two appropriation transfers before it was split into two pieces because some of it is intra-department, some of it is inter-department. First relates to the elimination of the deputy chief position for police department and the various accounts that were affected by that move. And the second transfer relates to the two retired police officers, the two new hires in their place, and funding the first year of the equipment police purchase for the car.
I make a motion to approve the following appropriation transfers as recommended by the town manager and the treasurer finance director.
Moved by Counsel Angeloni, seconded by Counsel Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Duddy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes.
Counsel Pucci?
Yes.
Counsel Wentworth?
Yes.
Item E, contingency transfers.
I make a motion that town manager is hereby authorized to appropriate from reserve for contingency account 101, forty-seven-oh-three, seven-sixty, dash, zero-zero-zero, and transfer into the appropriate account as soon as possible for the following reason, charter revision commission expenses of fifteen-hundred dollars. Second.
Moved by Counsel Angeloni, seconded by Counsel Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Duddy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes.
Counsel Pucci?
Yes.
Counsel Wentworth?
Yes.
Item F, financial report, March 31st, 2012.
The financial condition of the town remains strong. Tax collections, you'll see, just about on pace with last year. Total revenues, a couple of ticks ahead of last year. On the expenditure side, nothing too crazy to report. The latest account that went over budget was the Reynolds Beer's House. It was a thousand-dollar budget and a repair needed to the siding of about thirteen-hundred dollars, so that burdened that budget a little bit. But overall, things are looking well.
Thank you, Anthony. Item G, for approval of tax refunds.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Fucy, seconded by Counsel Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Duddy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes.
Counsel Pucci?
Yes.
Counsel Wentworth?
Yes.
Citizen statements and petitions.
I'm a little concerned about the police, the police department tonight. I really, I understand where they're coming from, and I really think that we should do it. I just don't know if we're able to do it right now. But I just wondered if there was any possibility of any of the cops grants coming down from the federal government again. If that ever happens in the near future, maybe we could ask them to send us something. But would we be willing to hire another police officer who's paid for?
That's one way to get one.
Julian, I'll be honest with you. You know, if I could weigh in on this, second, you know, the guys were here, very respectful. You know, and Officer Cunningham brought up a good point. The words he said when he leaves his home at night, he's a young man, recently married, he says goodbye. He doesn't say, "I'll see you later, we'll talk later." He says goodbye with the knowing that he may not come home at night. Being partial to public safety myself, this man, as long with his brother officers, even though we're in a small community, we're constantly hearing it, the police do nothing, nothing, nothing. There's a lot of stuff suppressed not to create hysteria. But these guys, I'm not looking at, talking about pay raises. My main concern is that I have a wife that's home ninety percent of the time with three small kids, as well of, as well as most of us have children and grandchildren. There's a call on one end of town with two officers. Who is gonna be there for the north or south end of the town if there is hypothetically a home invasion? You know, they fix bridges when they fall, they put gates at railroad crossings when, when the train hits the car. You know, if there's any possibility of adding an officer down the road, I certainly would like to see it or two because it's gonna take, and it's, I don't wanna say it, it's gonna take somebody to get killed before we act. It took us an untimely death, and John, if I'm out of line where I'm gonna get in trouble, let me know, to start the ambulance service. We had, I never forget, we had that emergency meeting.